I'm calling this meeting of the Public Safety Communications Task Force to order. It is 11:15 on June 5, 2024, and I'm Barbara Neal. As a reminder, as a reminder, the meeting is being recorded, and the recording will be posted on the task force webpage following the meeting. We have some background. There we go. So let's start with a roll call of task force members. So please acknowledge your presence verbally when I call your name. Jen Morrison.
I am here.
Morning. Paul White.
I'm here as well.
Michael Wright.
I am here.
I do not see Mike Dungus. Ron Kumitz.
I am here.
And Jim Mack.
Here.
Morning. Okay. Also joining us today is Callie Audet as our administrative support and our project management partners Rick and Dom from TeleVate. I see morning. I see Rance Duffy also on the call from Mission Critical as well as Phil Sisk from Mission Critical. And I see some other names on my screen here. I'm just going to call your your name or your phone number that I can see, and you may introduce yourself and any affiliation you care to share. So Kim Cheney, let's start with you.
Good morning, everyone. Looking forward to the meeting.
Nice to see you. Steve Baggio.
Yes, with Mission Critical Partners.
Good morning. I have a phone number ending in 2247. I didn't catch all of that. I think it might be Senator Renner.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay, good morning. All right. And then I see one more individual listed as meeting guest. I don't see a phone number. Do you, Callie?
I don't. It's just that I don't know.
Anyone else joining us that? Go ahead.
That's Steve Whitaker.
Thank you, Stephen. Okay. All right, so let's move on then to approval of the agenda. The agenda was distributed to task force members by email. It's also available on our webpage. Do task force members have any changes to the agenda for today? Great. Hearing nothing will consider the agenda approved and move on to approval of the minutes. These would be the minutes from the May 22 regular meeting, number 26. Any changes needed to these minutes? All right, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I got it. All right, did you catch that, Callie? All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the minutes from May 22? Raise your hand or indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and I see task force members on the screen. Hands are up. So thank you. The minutes are approved from May 22. All right, so let's move on to...
Barb, can you hear me?
I can.
There's, I just got a recording that the meeting was no longer being transcribed. So I'm concerned that that vote just didn't get recorded.
Well, Callie's recorded it in the minutes, but Callie, if you could check, could you check our recording and transcription?
It does look like the transcription stopped, but the recording was continuing.
Okay, thanks.
All right, moving on to public comment now. Let's see, I'll just call through the list. Kim Cheney, would you like to to comment?
Yes, briefly, I want to say hello to Rick and Dominic. Haven't seen you for a while, and I sent a message about my concern about the query of everybody. I think you need to know how many different political subdivisions are involved, not agencies. And I think you and I both discussed in the past a way to compute the per capita cost being borne locally by regional dispatch. And I hope you'll keep that in mind because that's going to be the key to any success in this project.
Okay. Thank you, Kim. Senator Renner, would you care to comment? It sounds like maybe your line is open, but we can't hear you. So I will move to Stephen Whitaker. Do you care to comment?
I do. I am, again, very concerned that the issues that I brought up are still not getting addressed or even discussed by this task force, specifically how interim standards are needed to guide. I know Windsor County got a $1.25 million earmark. What are we doing to, or what are you doing to make sure that there is standards, guidance, integration concepts that will make sure that the directions that these self-funded or otherwise funded projects don't go off down a path inconsistent with what Mission Critical is going to be coming up with. And I think it really, it probably would be Mission Critical's task to propose for the task force consideration some interim standards be adopted. You don't have enforcement authority over these other projects, but you darn sure have, you know, a stakeholder position. So similarly, you're not discussing the omission of LTE solutions and where do those play in the design for interim preparedness for storms, floods, solar, space weather, whatever. We are not, we're on track to get a design a year or two from now. We're not on track to be more resilient with what we have now. And just the glacial pace of this, actually, glacial doesn't work as a analogy anymore because glaciers are melting quicker than y'all are moving. So anyway, those are the comments I have for now. I am very concerned. I'd like to have opportunity to comment after we hear TeleVate's comments or on the role of the 9 million congressionally directed spending inconsistent with the congressional purpose, which is a transitional to statewide regional emergency communications. So I'll leave it at that for now.
All right, thank you, Stephen, and I'll address one one component of your comment right now. We're going to have public comment, be in the public comment period, which just ended. We'll obviously have another one next week or next meeting where we'll be interested in hearing your feedback on what TeleVate is going to discuss later or any other issue. And I am going to see, to make one more. Is there anyone else on the line who wishes to make public comment? Okay, Ron Kumitz, I see your hand up. Is that from the last vote?
I'm sorry, I forgot to take my hand down. I'm not like the kid in the back of the room that insists on attention.
Okay, fair enough. All right, let's move on then to the next agenda item, which is project updates. And I will hand this over to Dom.
Thank you, Barb, and good morning, everyone. In terms of the project status, the last couple of weeks has been focusing on the data collection questionnaire. We've done further review on that and provided or completed the questionnaire, and it was prepared and sent out to all dispatch centers within the state last week. So it was distributed and, I believe, distributed also to the dispatch centers outside of the state. The few, we're still having contact information issues with one, but it has been sent out to all the agencies we are aware of. And moving forward, MCP has plans to start their data collection calls. That is, they're going to plan to touch base with each of the dispatch centers to go over the questionnaire if they have any questions regarding that, give them assistance as to how to collect the data and how to enter the data. That'll be next week. Our plan for getting the data back from the questionnaires is the end of the month, June 28. So we're entering into a critical time period now to collect all this data, which of course will support the system inventory and system assessment. Based on the status of the questionnaire, we did update the project schedule. Based on our current position, we updated things since, you know, we had that information as to when the questionnaires went out and when the schedule is for returning them. So we made some adjustments, but key contract dates still remain. Some of the key dates, of course, that we are tracking include the final system inventory and assessment in late October. The schedule still tracks for us to be able to provide that in a timely manner. The preliminary system design plan is scheduled for late December, and that is reflected in our updated schedule as well. And the final plan is required by the end of January, and the schedule does still maintain those key dates. So we will use this as baseline moving forward, and we'll be able to update and track via the baseline as we move forward and start getting the responses in from the dispatch centers and development of the system assessment and inventory. I think that's the synopsis of where we are.
Okay. Task force members, do you have any questions or comments for Dom on the project status, project updates? Okay. Hearing nothing, we'll stay with Dom and move on to the next agenda item, which is the congressionally directed spending plan review. Go ahead, Dom.
Thank you, and yes, once again, I'll start out with this. I'll kind of be the, I guess I'll act as the play-by-play announcer, and Rick will be the color commentator as we move forward. So I'm sharing my screen now, and give me a second, put that into full screen mode, so everyone should be able to see that. This is TeleVate's assessment.
Could someone email that out for those of us that didn't get it or can't see?
Stephen, it hasn't been distributed to the task force yet. We can send it out after the meeting is over. Go ahead, Dom.
All right. This is TeleVate's assessment of the COPS grant programs. An overview of that, just some some background. Of course, as the task force members know, the Vermont Department of Public Safety was the recipient of $9 million through the DOJ's COPS grant program. COPS focuses on community policing, and it specifies that funding needs to be used for certain projects. We have a quote here. I'll read that verbatim. It's "to provide funding for projects which improve police effectiveness and the flow of information among law enforcement agencies, local government, service providers, and the communities they serve." So there's a focus on law enforcement, but it does also tangentially support other agencies, of course. The schedule for the projects, the original period was through the end of this year, but fortunately DPS was able to get that extended. So these projects now extend through 2025. At the beginning of the year, there was a revision to the approved programs that was presented to the DOJ, and those are currently under review, have not completely been approved, but currently under review and in discussion. What we are discussing here are those revised programs that have been proposed. A list of those occurs here. Projects, you'll see 1 through 14 shown here as they were provided by DPS. And we will address them in in groups as we felt it was appropriate to group some of the items together. Initially, of course, there's administration associated with facilitating this grant and the projects. That includes a project management item as well as administrative and an independent review item. These three items identified as projects 12, 13, and 14. Those were fairly easy to assess. They're certainly necessary and reasonable to execute the grant. The independent review has occurred, independent review of those grant proposals. It has been performed, and that has been distributed. And the PM task is under contract now as well. The next set of projects that we addressed, we grouped into a category we termed as reliability. So that includes these six items here. Colocation site resiliency, which includes redundant backhaul to some of the existing sites. Also, some existing sites will be enhanced for backup power in terms of both battery and rectifier improvements, item five, and standby generators there, item two. Some additional microwave system improvements to have additional reliability for interconnection between the sites. And also, there's some grounding improvements at various sites as well to improve consistent operation. There is also a test equipment portion of the grant that we grouped in this category as well. Our assessment of this group of projects are, again, they appear reasonable and necessary and certainly valid to improve site network reliability, which of course is, you know, a very important aspect for, obviously, for a public safety system. We consider these projects to be what we would call foundational and that they are key to establish a solid foundation to build on the network for future projects, future support. The improvements will benefit certainly the Vermont State Police, but additional agencies as well. We know of a number of agencies that use the VSP network as a primary system. Obviously, they will benefit from these as well. And also, agencies throughout the state utilize the VSP network for backup and when their primary system is unavailable or not working. Couple of recommendations associated with these projects. We want to ensure that for those times when the VSP network is used by other agencies, non-VSP agencies, that there are proper procedures in place to ensure that it's used at the appropriate time and in an appropriate manner. Also, we would recommend exploring opportunities for agencies throughout the state outside of VSP to potentially co-locate on the sites and share backhaul. We believe there should be some outreach to agencies to alert them of these projects and that there may be an opportunity to benefit from some of these upgrades. The next group of projects that we addressed and reviewed were these three projects in the dispatch group. Two of them specifically for dispatch equipment. One of them is for improvement to the consoles, another focuses on the phone system. And also, there's a network security project that addresses proper security measures for connecting PSAP networks to other networks. Our assessment of these projects, first, the two specifically in the dispatch realm, 9A and 9B. As I mentioned, they include updating existing consoles. So this includes new features and functionality associated with the existing consoles. Some of that includes capability of handling IP phone traffic. And in conjunction with that, the recommendation is to update the antiquated and out-of-date phone system within the two VSP PSAPs to support IP phone service. And then that can be integrated with the console and provide for a streamlined dispatch process. It'll certainly improve the capability and the means of handling calls in conjunction with dispatch at these two PSAPs. It's important to note that this does not impact the handoff from E911 to dispatch. There's no change there. And we believe that this change could potentially benefit other PSAPs and dispatch centers throughout the state. As of right now, we don't have the full information on the capability and processes of those other dispatch centers, but that's something that will be determined during this process as MCP moves forward and collects data and then does their site visits. So our recommendation is for MCP to document this project, identify the approach, understand the approach, and determine if it's potentially applicable statewide for other dispatch centers based on the information they collect. Also, still within the dispatch realm, but focused on the network security project, Project 11. It addresses some security concerns for connecting the current MPLS network with other, potentially other data networks. And obviously, network security is of key importance for public safety. So this is a necessary, reasonable project. And it's very likely, again, that a similar project at the other PSAPs dispatch centers throughout the state could be beneficial, especially when you consider some of the recommendations that may come from the system planning project may involve further regional dispatch capabilities and potential for multiple dispatch centers to operate together either for backup or with redundancy. So our recommendation is similar, that we believe MCP should document this project and the approach and analyze its potential applicability for other dispatch centers throughout the state. The final group of projects that we evaluated, and actually, the bulk of the funding, is focused on a network upgrade for the Vermont State Police Network, an upgrade to the APCO P25 standard. It includes these projects here. You'll see, we grouped item 1B, which was a network expansion, actually, including expanding the network to other sites for improved coverage. And then to implement or upgrade to P25, there has to be an engineering process. The 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 plan is to develop simulcast regions or simulcast cells throughout the VSP network. That requires engineering in terms of site usage, antennas at those particular sites, combining equipment for the antennas for combining multiple channels, and the actual hardware that will be necessary to sustain the the P25 upgrade, the hardware itself and the antennas and additional equipment. Our assessment of these projects is certainly, we agree with migration to Project 25. As mentioned, it's a standard developed by APCO and widely implemented throughout the US for public safety. And it will provide some coverage improvements, both from additional sites as well as we see a coverage improvement by migrating from analog to P25 digital. It can also provide some improvements in voice clarity with the digital voice. Again, we see similar benefits for this project with regards to the various agencies. Obviously, VSP will be a primary beneficiary, but certainly, agencies that use the VSP network either as primary system or for backup will benefit from the system upgrade as well. And similarly to, as we discussed previously, agencies, other agencies may be able to leverage, especially when we look at the additional radio sites that are going to be included. Other agencies may be able to leverage those sites to improve their systems, coverage, and capability. One key item to keep in mind is that all radios need to be P25 capable in order to take advantage of these benefits. So we certainly need to confirm capability for all those agencies that would be affected. The VSP's radios have been assessed, and we believe those to be capable of migrating to P25. We want to make sure that that's a key aspect that needs to be confirmed. And also, transitioning to P25 digital technology as well as IP transport of intersite communications sometimes includes additional maintenance costs that need to be captured and make sure that those are budgeted. And our recommendation, we are familiar, of course, with P25 and have been involved with numerous implementations. We know there's specific considerations and sometimes nuances that come into play with P25. So we recommend that DPS retain P25 engineering expertise to assist with this design and implementation of the upgrade. One one final note, since we did talk a little bit about schedule, and I know some of the discussions that are ongoing between DPS and the DOJ is regarding projects that may require environmental assessments that, of course, has a potential schedule impact. So note is that, just to confirm that any, if there are additional modifications to any of the grant activities, those have to be carefully assessed and then navigated to make sure there's implementation schedule is realistic within the time limits of the grant. So as we have, happy to answer any questions.
Great, Dom, thank you. Do task force members have any questions, comments for Dom?
I have some comments. The entirety of the VSP network is P25 compatible. That's actually been confirmed. There was a very short period where they where they transitioned to P25 and then realized that when they went to digital, their coverage suffered for a number of reasons. So they had to switch back. So their their equipment is all compatible, but I agree, they definitely need to get some some coverage studies done and look at those issues before they make that movement again because it was a serious headache when they did that.
Sorry, go ahead.
And then my 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 question is, are you... are, are you, going forward, are, are you operating under the the idea that it would be a good idea to migrate other public safety users to P25? I, I didn't, I, I mean, I, I don't, I'm not going to read anything into what your, your comments regarding the VSP network.
In, in general, that is something that we generally do recommend, but that's based on each individual agency's needs. And we would recommend, you know, identifying specific needs of the agency and then determining if it would be beneficial. We certainly see a lot of agencies transitioning to P25. Certainly law enforcement more predominantly because, because there's opportunity for encryption easily with a P25 network. The fire and EMS agencies don't transition necessarily at the, you know, the, the same amount of need. It may be a benefit to them depending on coverage or other options, but it all depends on their specific need, their existing network and obviously what would be required to upgrade them. Another comment too, I, we, we did hear previously about the previous attempt to transition to P25. And certainly there are considerations that need to be taken into account. When you, especially when you implement a simulcast system. And for those that aren't radio savvy, simulcast means you have a number of sites, a multiple number of sites that all transmit the same information throughout a large area. Having multiple sites allows you to increase the coverage area. Transmitting simultaneously allows you to provide the coverage within that entire footprint. But there are areas where you have what we call overlap zones where multiple sites can cover a particular area and the radio may be receiving data from, or, or, or the voice communication from multiple sites. And if timing is off between those two sites, that can provide interference or can generate interference. So the design has to be done such that you minimize those potential interference areas.
And, and Ron, if I may add to Dom's comments, we recommend that all upgrades be P25 capable. In fact, federal grant, grant dollars are not allowed, would not be applicable unless the equipment is P25 capable. So we, you know, based on our own background and with working in certain communities within state of Vermont, particularly on a firefighter side, a, a digital network is not really required for their ongoing operational needs, but, but a, a analog simulcast network certainly has benefits. And so what I think we'll find through the discovery process is that the radio networks that are serving firefighters, law enforcement, emergency management, emergency responders throughout the state are different. And so they're going to be in different levels of need. And, and upgrading them all to a digital Project 25 standard may not be, you know, the, the appropriate for them or necessary. But any, any changes, enhancements need to be Project 25 capable to ensure that we could get access to federal dollars in the process to support those, those enhancements.
So I, I, I agree with, with, with part of that. And I, I'm not sure that I disagree with any of it based on, you know, your thinking and, and not to like usurp too much time, but while I do agree that, that infrastructure should be P25 capable. The problem with federal grants, you know, taking federal grants where, where a fire department gets a really cool grant to buy a really cool P25 subscriber units is that the first time one of those subscriber units break and they find out that it will cost more to repair it than it would have cost to buy a new analog subscriber unit. The, the whole thing becomes a Trojan horse. So that, that's my big concern about luring agencies over to converting their subscriber units to P25 when they may not have the budget to support the more sophisticated equipment.
Yeah, we, we fully agree with you, Ron. We've got to keep in mind the cost of maintaining the equipment. However, we can buy radios that are, are capable of adding the software, capable, you know, the software necessary to support a digital operations. So the radios themselves, you know, could support that operation, but not necessarily be purchased with that equipment. So that would still meet the requirement if they were purchased with federal dollars and that they are capable. We just haven't activated or purchased the, the, you know, the software required for that. And that, that still meets the, the federal requirements. But you're absolutely right. I mean, this is, this has to be, the total cost of ownership needs to be looked at in totality. You know, from not only, not, not only the cost of the, of the equipment, but the ongoing maintenance of the equipment. And, and as we, as, as was indicated in here, one of the items that we had a conversation about was that there hadn't been a consideration to the ongoing operating cost of a project of a P25 network. The, the software, the licensing for the software i- is, is a new line item. In a conventional network, you don't have that line item. So when you go to this, you've got additional ongoing maintenance costs that need to be considered. And, and we, you know, that we want to caution that those be kept in mind as, as these upgrades are being made. And, and the budgeting for those dollars are made post-year one.
Okay. Thank you. Ron, are, are you all set with your questions and comments?
I am, and I need to run, so I bid you all adieu.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ron. And just rest of the task force members. Commissioner Morrison had to drop off the call. She will be back. And we still have a quorum is what I'm checking. So Paul, myself, Michael and Jim. So stay on the call, guys. Okay. Any other comments or questions from task force members on this presentation on the CDS spending?
I guess the only thing I'll add is that we just want to keep in mind that since nine 11, right, we had funding and EMS agencies were funded with radios so that we could monitor and radio law enforcement. My concern with this being heavy on VSP and going P25 without consideration of EMS, there's going to be no communication across the, the network. So we have new, you know, new technology and old technology. We don't want to go to a system that makes this worse. So we need to think about the EMS agencies with this as well, that we're still able at the end of the day to communicate with our law enforcement partners. And that's becoming more and more of a need and an issue as many of us as EMS agencies are working in a tactical environment and need that communication. So I just want to keep that in the forefront and remind everyone that, you know, this can't also be all of the VSP needs. It needs to be a, a system improvement across the board for all of us.
Yes. Like comment on that, bud?
Yes. Dom, go ahead.
We, we share that concern, Michael, and we have had that discussion as well. We understand that there are multiple channels that agencies have the capability to communicate with VSP that are monitored at the VSP PSAPs. So moving forward, while you may have the primary channel moving to P25, there are other channels that are not, that are planned to remain analog and will be monitored at PSAP to ensure that other agencies still can communicate and call VSP when necessary.
And, and Michael, that's actually the, what, what was behind our comment of policy for accessing and using the, the, the VSP network. So we, we don't want to break interoperability. You know, we want to enhance it, but we need, you know, the policy needs to be clear in that if this causes changes to the channels that are required to maintain interoperability, that needs to be fully understood and communicated and, and and so these changes need, can need, you know, you can't look at them in a vacuum. You need to look at them across all of the agencies that either use directly or interoperate over these networks and to ensure that we don't break any, any chains that are required. And, and that, that, that behind that one bullet is really that interoperability. Oh, those interoperability requirements. So to identify them and to make sure that going forward, that we don't ruin what, you know, and don't eliminate what needs there are. Or if we have to make some additional changes that they are fully understood and coordinated, the changes needed are coordinated across the process.
Thank you.
Okay. Other comments from task force members? Okay, so there's, there's a lot of information that was presented today. I don't know that the task force needs to take any particular action today, or we could. What's, what is the opinion of the task force about where we go from here? I, I see a couple of options, one of which would be to allow ourselves time to digest what we heard today and maybe have a follow-up discussion on this at the next meeting. But if others are comfortable with what they've heard and they want to propose some other course of action, that's fine too.
I will say I'm comfortable with what I've heard, but I'm not sure what I would propose for a next course of action. I mean, I think DPS is headed down the path that they're headed. They're waiting for still some approvals from, on the federal level for certain components of their plan to spend the nine million. And I guess until they get that approval, I'm not sure what action the task force would take.
Fair enough.
I haven't heard anything that would cause me to put on the brakes and tell them to change gears.
Yeah, my thought was, you know, just to ask the, the commissioner to pass on these recommendations that came in this report from TeleVate to whatever members of her team need them, need to be aware of them. And then to also continually update the task force on the work as it goes along, right? So we're not, so we're, so we're aware of what's happening in the landscape. I think that's pretty much a given.
Yes. Agreed.
Uh, uh, Bob, if I may add to that, we, you know, following, following this, this meeting here and the presentation, we will, you know, we will have a conversation with MCP to discuss with them in a little bit more detail our recommendations to them so that they have all the background behind what, what we, what was done and why we recommended that. And I, I don't think it, it doesn't change their work. They were going to be capturing this information anyway. Now they can, you know, capture the information and also assess it based on, on these, these items that the, 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 the COPSCRAN will be supporting.
Okay, that, that makes good sense. And, and I, I'm sure you'll pass this along in your conversations with Mission Critical. To Michael's point about making sure where the, the needs of all of the responders are being taken into account. I think that's a really good point. And historically, at least in my view, it seems that a lot of these communications issues are driven by the needs of law enforcement. And I mean that generally, not any particular agency or department, but generally law enforcement. And and, and then the others are kind of having to be tagged along, you know, with whatever has been decided at that level. So if we could just keep that as part of the conversation too, I think that would be good.
A, a radio interoperability is fundamental for all, all first responder agencies and anything that, any improvements that are made and one can, you know, cannot be, be achieved in, 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 you know, in detriment to interoperability. So some, actually some questions that we recommend to be added to the survey were, were also to ensure that we gather that interoperability, radio interoperability information.
Great. Great. Paul, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to bring this up under new business, but I guess maybe this seems like an appropriate time to, to go there. And it has to do with one of Steve Whitaker's comments that actually I shared with him. I, I brought it up earlier and that has to do with agencies that are currently moving ahead with other projects independent of the work of this task force. Like he referenced Windsor County Sheriff receiving some federal money. I know the Central Vermont project has been starting and stopping for years. And I think there are a couple of others out there testing the waters. And, you know, I don't know that I necessarily agree that the task force at this particular point in time has any authority to establish operational standards or technical standards. And I know we've been trying our best to be transparent, to get word out to everybody. We putting out updates and newsletters and doing everything we can to try to make sure everybody knows what we're doing. But, you know, and for those agencies that we know are moving forward without us, you know, maybe we need to do some kind of targeted outreach specifically at them to make sure that they know the work that's being done so that they don't go too far down the wrong path, buying equipment that's not compatible or going in a direction that isn't going to work with whatever system ultimately gets designed a year from now.
I think targeted outreach is, is a good idea. On the, on the question of interim standards, I think I would defer to Dom and Rick about whether there are interim standards that the task force should be considering, at least for recommendations for when people are moving forward. Though that is, that is part of the work of Mission Critical. So it's, you know, I don't, I don't know. Paul, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I read through just during the presentation, since I had seen an advanced copy of the present, not to imply I wasn't paying attention to you, Dom. But since I had an advanced copy of your presentation, I was reading the enabling legislation at the same time multitasking. And I don't, it does reference this task force coming up with interim standards, but or excuse me, operational and technical standards, but it doesn't really seem to give us any authority to to mandate anything, to force anything upon anybody. We can make recommendations, but to who? To the legislature? To the agency of administration? To, to who? And in what format does that take? Does it, does it need to go before the, you know, Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules? Does it need to go, you know, how? It's not spelled out how this group would go about implementing any standards.
And, and my impression had been that that would happen after we have a, a final
After we have a plan, right.
And then some entity is going to have presumably that authority.
Okay, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that it's this task force.
Not sure it is either. And Rick, I, I interrupted you. Did you have something to add?
I, I might, I was, as we, you know, have this conversation, my thinking is, is that perhaps as Paul indicated, and, and, you know, we, Dom and I could take a look at, at the accent language. And we can, you know, look at the overall approach of, of MCP, what their scope is. And, you know, I mean, and, and we have some background of certainly having worked in the state on, on regional policy and, and provide some recommendations on whether interim policy or, or, I mean, we certainly have support outreach. But policy is something that is kind of tricky, you know, I mean, you, it's, now we're, we're stepping into the governance lane. And so how much governance recommendations can we provide at this stage of the game? We certainly don't, you know, the idea of if, if an agency, if, if, if a jurisdiction agencies are, are going in, you know, they, they've acquired funding and they are spending those dollars to what they think are their best, in their best interest. I, I, I don't think that we, it would be wise of us to stop them. But to know what they're doing and let them know how it could or might not, how it might not fit into or where they might have to adjust it, I, I think is appropriate. We don't know where we are going to be in terms of recommendations. So MCP does their work. But, you know, there, there, I think that it makes sense to reach out to them to find out. But, you know, there, there, I think that it makes sense to reach out to them to find out what they're doing for sure in advance. And for us, you know, to provide some feedback on whether or not recommendations from the Task Force are prudent at this time. I, I, I'll, we'll, we'll need, you know, some input on whether or not the Task Force feels that it's in a position to make a policy at this stage of the game. We don't have all the input we have, but, you know, providing some advanced notification of what we're doing and why we're doing it and, and what outcomes we're anticipating and how that might impact the investments they're making, I think is all relevant. I, I, I think that should definitely be done.
Okay.
I'm in support of outreach. The problem I have is trying to set down policy to somebody. You know, they're using their dollars that they've gotten either through federal grants or raised themselves. How are we going to tell them that they can't spend the money how they want? That's my first issue. I have some fire departments that are working on a different system behind the scenes. You could come and tell them that they can't do that, but they're still going to keep moving forward on their project because it benefits them. Interim standards or whatever. And I don't see anything in the legislation that really gives us any authority to lay down any standards until we do all of our work here first. I would recommend, recommend that there are certain things that we're doing that may impact their projects. And really the only two big things that I can think of is if they're purchasing a console system is one of the big things, or if they're looking at a CAD system. Those are the two big things that would be out there that may not fit with what we're doing.
So I'm remembering on the questionnaire, there are, there is at least one question about whether there are any planned technological upgrades that are planned and budgeted for, so we, we might have a sense of some of this. It, it sounds like some people are aware of certain work going on. I don't know that we have a, a good listing of all the projects. That would be the result hopefully of the questionnaire.
Yeah, I don't like the one, for example, the one that Steve mentioned was Windsor County Sheriff got a grant to upgrade their system, but I'm not sure that they will receive that questionnaire because they're not currently a regional or a dispatch center of any kind other than maybe just for themselves. So they probably won't receive that survey. Won't be asked the questions. So they probably would require some targeted outreach, just as an example. And I think that's, you know, they received an earmark through Senator Welch. I'm not sure how or what their compelling argument was as to why they of, of all agencies received the money, but they did. I guess you don't get it if you don't ask, and they asked.
Right, right.
I, I think if we know of today of any enhancements that are being made, that we should document them and be sure that they're on our outreach list. So, you know, Windsor, Windsor Sheriff, yes. Others that you, that members of the Task Force know of, or that we can easily find. I think those should be, you know, we should identify them now so that if, if, we, we certainly do not want to miss someone that's making an upgrade that isn't, isn't going to get the, the questionnaire. We need to reach out to them particularly. And, and of course, you know, the questionnaire is going to bring light to other enhancements that are being made, other improvements that are being made. But whatever we know now, we should document it and be sure that they don't get overlooked.
Agreed, agreed.
Not, not the comment, well, my two cents, Barb, I agree with the targeted outreach that seems to make sense. And I look at it kind of similar to what the TeleVate review looked at for the COPS programs. We looked at it based on your direction to see what plans would be what you might call foundational versus what might be somewhat restrictive. So if we are aware of ongoing projects in other parts of the state, we could take a similar look at that to see and identify if there is anything that could potentially be restrictive.
That sounds like a plan. I mean, I've heard mention of Windsor Sheriff. That's the only thing I know about. So we, the first step I think is going to be collecting the information on who's got these things going on. So, okay. So we will bring that to our meetings, Dom and Rick, that kind of develop a, a plan around that when we meet outside of this meeting. Okay. All right. Other comments, questions from Task Force members? Okay. All right, moving on then to new business. Do Task Force members have any new business? Okay, hearing nothing. The final agenda item is to confirm the next meeting date, which is set for June nineteenth. And adjourn. If there's nothing further, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Sure, I'll second that.
Thank you, Jim. Thanks, Paul. All in favor, raise your hand or indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We have myself, Jim, Paul, with hands raised. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody, and we will talk to you next time.
Thank you all. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.